All right. Good evening. I called over the September 12th, 22, David County Commissioners Meeting to Order. I'll ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, let's pray. Father, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you for, in your sovereignty, Lord, placing us in this greatest and freest of all lands. Father, we thank you for men and women that serve on battlefields today that we might be free. We thank you for men and women that serve in our law enforcement, our fire departments, our EMS, in our schools, that our community may be safe and a great place to raise a family. We pray tonight for wisdom, discernment, knowledge, and understanding to do, Father, what you've called us to do, Lord, for the citizens of this great county that we live in. So, Lord, bless us, touch us, be with us. We thank you for each one that is here, and we give you praise, glory, and honor. In Christ's name, amen.
Stand for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Next, we'll go to Ethics and Conflicts Disclosures. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the David County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December 2nd, 2019, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest, respect any matter on the proposed agenda, which would come before the board tonight for a vote tonight at this meeting. If so, please speak up and let the board know before the agenda is adopted. Seeing no one speak up, I would conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest of any board member, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Next, I'll move for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion to have a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Motion, second, and further discussion. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to public comment, period.
Mr. Chair, we have had, looks like, four individuals sign up tonight. During the public comment section, I'll be calling each individual to the podium, come up to the podium, state your name into the mic so that is recorded, and then go ahead and start speaking. You'll have three minutes to speak. I will hold up signs, letting you know you've got two minutes remaining, one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, and when it is time to stop. If you're speaking for an organization, you will have five minutes allotted time as a single representative to speak on that organization. You're to address the board as a whole, not to ask for any verbal, it changes back and forth between the board. It's not the intent of the public comment to require the board to answer any impromptu questions, and there should be no discussions between speakers and members of the audience. All comments shall be verbal in form, and you will make your presentation, and we have 30 minutes allowed for public comments at this time. First one we have that has signed up is William R. Davie Group. Looks like it just says William R. Davie Group. I assume that's Fire Department, and I'll Jason Keaton on funding. And I assume he is speaking on behalf of the group, but I'll let him answer that when he gets up here.
My name is, as you stated, Jason Keaton. I'm Fire Chief of Weymar Davie Fire Department. I'm speaking on behalf of the group for the funding proposal that is out and about for tonight's agenda. Let me first off start off and say thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. What I've got to talk about is going to take every bit of the five minutes within the group portion, so I'd like to get started. I'm approaching you tonight to speak on two parts with the funding agenda. First, this method of funding, and the second, which also plays a large role in funds and a negative matter for my department in particular in this time in annexations. First, on the method, for the last eight to 10-plus years, each department has had to fill out a budget for the county on each of the department needs, and those budgets, for the majority of the departments average out around $400,000 each. The three remaining bigger departments' budgets falling around $800 to $1 million, which is also very close to being run as a full-time paid status. With that being said, I know you guys are working hard to find more funds, and we are all appreciative very much of your efforts. But I would ask that within these budget sheets available, you guys should have got a good understanding of a way to equate what it takes to operate a fire department at today's cost. These costs shouldn't be what it takes, these costs should be what it takes across the board for these departments to operate on average in David County, not on the equations that this district brings in this amount from taxes collected, or that department brings in that amount. It should be a standard across the board. As each one of you, how can I provide the same services as Mossville Fire Department when my budget is $212,000 and theirs is $541,000 plus the additional $250,000 from the town for a total of $790,000? It's simple. I can't, and the people I protect deserve more than that. Again, it should be about what this area brings and the amount, it shouldn't be about what this area brings in amount of tax dollars. The citizens of this county as a whole don't get a lesser of law enforcement, EMS services, or school service coverage in the smaller 10 districts. So why should this method be used on fire protection methods? Also, based off of this method of funding, I've asked to ask, why don't we also consider a few other things? I know for one of these proposals is ask for the rescue squad to get more money than the other lower nine departments. Why is this? I understand they cover the whole county and their call volume is larger, but it doesn't cost them the same on a per-call basis as a fire department, nor for apparatus, gear, or the needs of equipment as a fire department. On another note, two of the fire departments within the county that serve a smaller portion of David County, but also serve a portion of Ardell County, from where they receive an additional $125,000 yearly from Ardell County, along with the $212 from Davie. While I'm not asking for these two departments to receive less than we do, but I also have to ask on another note, based off, if we use this same method as above, why doesn't Courtney, Scotch Iris, and Long Hickory receive the same $212,000? For shouldn't the citizens they protect in David County deserve the same coverage as these two departments versus the $56,000 it costs for the combined three in total? Now moving back to the big three departments, as we like to call them, on their base funding, if each of you would study this, you would see that their growth on funding in these three areas alone are as follows. Station 12 has grew by $65,000 within the past three years. Station 24, 22, has grew by $124,000 in the last three years, and Station 24 is at $131,000 within the last three years. The rest of the nine departments as a whole only grew by $143,000. I'm sure also that these departments will have given complaints that they need more money, as we all do, to operate, but another thing to consider in this is how many of these said fire departments are chasing the status to become heavy rescue when we already have a rescue squad throughout the county. To me, that is tying up tens of thousands of dollars for a duplicate service. That's all I have on the part for the funding. I have another part to attain with this within the annexations. So do you guys want me to?
Thank you, and we'll call you back on that. Next, we have Julia Whitaker on David County Mental Health Advocates.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a few months since I addressed you on behalf of the David County Mental Health Advocates, so tonight I'd like to express appreciation for the cooperation we have received from county departments and staff, and provide an update on mental health issues we hope to address. A big shout-out and many thanks to Suzanne Wright from the Department of the Consolidated Departments of Health and Human Services. She has invited us to several meetings where we discuss gaps in services needed, support, and representation on committees with mutual goals regarding mental health. We have tackled educating the community via the local news media and the county's website, housing for those with SUD, and community supports for persons with mental health disabilities. Many thanks to the sheriff and the detention staff for responding to our questions and helping us educate the community about procedures and services and supports that are available, and our sincere appreciation to Rodney Pierce of the 911 Communications Center for his help with understanding how 911 collaborates with the EMS and the sheriff when mental health emergency calls come in. We hope this information and further collaboration will influence, lost my place there, and the enhancement of the 988 Mental Health Crisis Response Team approach that only relies on law enforcement when necessary. Also, Greg Forbes with the Community Paramedics Program has been gracious with his time and explanations of the program and the possibilities for the future. We have been connected to the Violence Prevention Department to address our mutual goals as well. We have connected more county agents to the Partners Davie Community Collaborative. The collaborative is researching data to formulate our goals and initiatives for the fiscal year '22, '23, and beyond. The goals under consideration are: Raise awareness about violence prevention, mental health, which may include prevention of bullying, substance abuse, and suicide ideation attempts and completions; Encourage Davie County to explore the opportunity and the intent of the new 988 Suicide Crisis Lifeline by fulfilling the goal of the initiative to provide emergency mental health responses rather than just a law enforcement response; and consider an educational component in the local schools for the at-risk youth as an effective approach to raise awareness of bullying, violence, and mental illnesses, including thoughts of suicide. Finally, I hope you are reading our articles in the Enterprise Record and the Davie Life as we strive to inform the people of Davie County about the services and supports that are available, as well as what is possible for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have on our list Todd Naylor, Farmington Fire Department. And Todd, is that for a group also, five minutes?
As Council State, my name is Todd Naylor, Fire Chief at Farmington. I think most of y'all have met me before. Mr. Barnett, happy to meet you. Chairman Blackman, Commissioners. Kind of addressing a letter I sent to you back in December about funding, and I really appreciate your attention to this matter. I know you've helped us in the past year, and there's some money this year that you're talking about allocating later today, and so just kind of wanted to refresh your memory about a few of those things. I've done research on fire department funding, and there's a wide variety of models that are in place all over North Carolina and the United States for that matter. Each county in North Carolina is unique, comprised of multiple departments that are predominantly volunteer, some sort of paid, part-time manpower is incorporated in those volunteers. David County is no exception. We're comprised of residential areas, farms with large structures, schools, churches, major highways, and industry scattered all throughout the county. And it's evident from our recent ISO survey over the last year that our departments need each other, and we depend on each other for equipment and manpower when we have large fires. Therefore, we need a funding solution with a fair and equitable distribution of funds that will ensure our ability to meet our capital needs and operational needs for the future, because our operational and capital needs seem to be growing a lot faster than our funding grows. And we've discussed many options before. I know I've sent you various articles. Hopefully, you've taken the time to at least look into some of those things. Rural tax districts and individual service districts are funding models that were popular in years past, but they just result in taxpayers paying a wide range of rates throughout the county for presumably the same service. If a person lives in an area with a higher tax value, they might pay less than someone who lives in, say, Farmington or Weymar Davie area. So it results in adequate funding for some districts while others generate an excessive amount of funds, and we all have the same contract, we signed the same contract with the county to provide the same services to the same folks in the whole county. So as my proposal, in the previous information I provided, you know, you could solve this problem by establishing an all-county or a county-wide service district, and everybody would pay the same amount of fire tax. Then you could take that money generated from that fire tax, and you could divide it up between the departments in an equitable fashion. You could devise a formula. I'd be happy to talk to you about those things. It could be weighted on a variable distribution that might include assessed value, housing units in different districts, population, major highways, schools, governments, whatever. Ardell County is one that I've shared an example with you. They determined a couple of years ago that their base funding for their departments is $290,000 compared to where we're at, at $212 for our base departments. We have the same needs that they have, we have the same needs as the bigger departments have here. I really hope you'll take action later this evening to allocate this $492,000 to help get us closer to the base that we need, not trying to take money away from the larger departments, but our needs need to be met as well. I mean, we're providing the services to our districts, you know, just the same as they are. The last allocation was the first increase we'd had in 15 years, and that was it. Now, they get an additional $35,000 every year where we don't get the bump up. So this $492,000 will definitely help, if you can help our departments get to the bases that we need to be at, it'll be a big step. I also support the sales tax referendum, if we can get that on the ballot to help with our capital needs in the future, so we'll keep that in mind. And I do appreciate your time, hope you will reach out to me, and be happy to sit down and talk to all of you. Thank you again.
Mr. Chair, next we have on our list Jason Keaton on annexation. And I assume you're speaking as an individual this time?
No, I'm speaking as a group, again, as a fire department group.
Okay.
All right. Now on to, as I stated earlier on my second part of my agenda, as this doesn't deal with funding in one sense, it also does in the means of annexation. I would strongly encourage this group of Commissioners to study ways to stop annexations from occurring. It's been done on other states such as Georgia, where the county has stepped in and been successful in stopping said annexations. The reason I'm bringing this up is these annexations have affected my department in a negative financial manner. As I hope each of you are aware, that the South Point Business Park was annexed into the city and away from Weymar Davie Fire District in the 90s. Our department received compensation for this annexation and a one-time disbursement of approximately $3,600 to now have that same 200 acres, 200-plus acres, to bring in $32,000 yearly in fire protection tax that goes directly to Mossville. In the works now is for the city to annex a 100-acre portion in the near future for the same concept as the South Point Business Park, with another 40-plus acres along with a few more smaller areas to follow suit behind this annexation. All of these will be pulled from our fire district and given to the town alone with the fire tax collected in these said areas, simply because the county doesn't provide sewer outside of the town to these manufacturing facilities. But could someone also explain to me how the city sewer managed to be run out to the new industrial area at 158 and Foster Dairy Road, but it can't be done for the 601 North area? In closing, as you can see, there's nothing that will increase our fire funding with the exception of the one-to-two family dwellings only. With that being said, I would hope that I've provided enough information to this board to possibly table this decision on the fire funding tonight until a later date to study all the points I provided you tonight, and have the motion provided this $92,000 to the said smaller departments to get them more cordial to the bigger three. I'd also forgotten one other thing as far as it goes within capital improvements. I noticed that the fire departments are still not involved within the capital improvements in sessions inside of the planning of the county. As you guys ride through the county, you need to look at these fire departments. Within the next 15 years, with the exception of advance, all these fire departments are going to have to be replaced, and we can't do it simply on $212,000. Can't do it on $290,000, as Todd said earlier. It's tough to do that. But I want to take this time to thank you for what you do for the county, and I'm sure that I'm probably the most disliked person in this room right now, but I feel like it's my job to do the best I can to protect the people I serve. I also have a little breakdown here of the financial growth chart for the past three departments by department, if you guys would like to obtain, take a copy of that. I want to close out to also say that I agree and concur with what Mr. Naylor said as well, that we need to get to that $290,000 a little bit faster, but this county as a whole needs to grow, and I also agree and would support the caution that sales tax to go for fire department fundings only, to help get us to the need possibly for these capital improvements that I spoke of earlier. Back to the annexations, you can research it. I'd strongly recommend you guys to take a look and see if you can stop it in any way, shape, or form. To me, Davie County is more important than Mossville. It's our county, not the city, and where's their growth going to stop? Nobody can answer that, but it affects me, I'm within a four-year window of having to build a new fire station. Where they decide to stop annexation also plays a big part of where we place a new fire station at, and that's something that I'm going to have to, we're going to have to have county help from as well, and county input. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Mr. Chair, that's the only ones that have signed up for tonight, public comment.
All right. So move to our presentations. We'll start with our Going the Extra Mile Awards. Mr. Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask that you all, if you don't mind coming down front, to meet our employees that are part of our GEM presentation like we did back in April. So while you're doing that, just wanted to go over the purpose of GEMS. This is one of those great meetings where we get to celebrate our great workforce here in David County, and the GEMS program is designed to recognize and reward county employees for their excellence in service, consistent with our I Pledge value statement. This program allows staff to submit nominations of their peers for recognition and a monetary award of $250,000, which will be, due to the timing of this board meeting, is actually this Friday's paycheck, so our employees that we recognize this week will receive it this Friday. And the categories within the I Pledge values are innovation, professionalism, leadership, empowerment, duty and service, gratitude, and excellence. So I would like for all of our folks, as you come up, I'll call you up one by one, and then at the end, I'd like to get one group picture of all of our GEMS recipients. So I'm going to start with our first one, which is Andy Atwood. Andy's in our Public Services Manager with the Public Utilities. Andy is always going above and beyond to help staff on weekends, late nights, and holidays. He's always answers the phone to assist in any way, no matter day or night. He's always researching new ideas, tools, and parts to make everyone's jobs easier, and Andy has built a great relationship with the community, contractors, and staff. He will go above and beyond to meet the customers' help, to help customers diagnose problems with their homes and businesses. Thank you. All right, next we have Teresa Carter. Teresa is in our Adult Services, she's an Adult Services Social Worker in our Health and Human Services. Teresa was investigating a report received about a disabled elderly individual who had not been seen in several days, and upon arriving at this individual's home, she found this individual face down on the floor, conscious but injured. The disabled elderly adult had fallen and had been on the floor for six days. Davie County EMS was called, and the individual's vitals were critical. Disabled adult was admitted to the hospital, and adult service staff assisted in obtaining long-term care. Also, this individual had a dog in the house that had not eaten or been out for six days, and Teresa was able to feed the dog and make sure the dog was able to go outside, and was able to contact Animal Control, and we have been able to find some folks to adopt the dog. Thank you, Teresa. Next up is Michaela Lawson. Michaela is an Income Maintenance caseworker with Health and Human Services. Michaela was on the phone with a client when the client's speech became impaired. The client stated that she had a terrible headache and disconnected the phone call. Fortunately, Michaela called her back, and although the client stated a friend was coming to visit her, Michaela believed the client sounded as if her condition was deteriorating. Believing the client was suffering from a medical emergency, Michaela contacted Emergency Communication, who dispatched EMS to the client's home. The client was transported to the hospital where medical procedure was performed to stabilize the client's condition. The client called Michaela the following day and thanked her for her assistance. Next, we have Rhonda Mock. Rhonda is a Public Health Nurse with Health and Human Services. Rhonda has busy programs and was still able to be a leader with innovation of the COVID-19 mass clinics. She was able to brain together and work with other departments in Davie County. Rhonda was a beacon of light to staff and volunteers doing mass clinics, never showing anything but strength and leadership with patients and staff. She was able to keep the Pediatrics Clinic running during all of this and helping our pediatric patients that were sick and needing appointments. If that wasn't enough, she was also helped with providing COVID-19 testing in the parking lot during our coldest and hottest days for employees and members of the community. Rhonda was able to assist daycare centers, long-term care facilities, doctor's offices, and others with vaccine and testing sites. Then even the littlest of patients and their new moms could get 100% of Rhonda during clinics, visiting, teaching about COVID-19 safety, feeding vaccines, teaching personal care, and just making them feel like they're the most important people. Rhonda is that nurse that all nurses strive to be. Next, we have Megan Tomlin. Megan is our Veteran Services Officer with Health and Human Services. Megan's tribe description requires that she help veterans file claims and fill out paperwork. If she just did that, she would help, she helps many veterans of our community, however, Megan goes above and beyond that requirement. She not only helps them fill out the claims, she takes the time to fully understand each veteran's situation so they can help them, even when they don't know that they're eligible for services. Often, a veteran casually mentions something in conversation that will prompt Megan to dig deeper and to get them more benefits. From a recent thank you note, a veteran said, "You read between the lines in that initial approval that, you read between the lines in that initial approval that mentioned that I might be eligible for something else, and with the accompanying VA health benefits, I wouldn't have to work myself into the grave. Now I can enjoy a few of these golden years," and I quote. In addition, Megan is not afraid to tackle those hard cases that other Veteran Service Officers say are not within their effort. For example, a veteran had been denied a claim, and the Veteran Service Officer in Ohio where he lived had told him that it was not worth fighting. Instead of accepting that, Megan spent a great deal of time digging through VA records and finally, and found a mention of a diagnosis. The claim was resubmitted, and the VA approved this claim. This veteran now receives $905 each month due to Megan's persistence. Megan also takes the time to work with community agencies to get veterans help in other ways. In one instance, she was able to assist with getting donated medical supplies for a veteran, and another, she was able to help find a volunteer to drive a veteran to a medical appointment. In another instance, she helped to get a veteran to set up replacement ribbons and medals because the veteran had lost them. There are many more examples of the difference that Megan helps in the lives of Davie County veterans. Perhaps it's best summed up by a quote from another thank you letter from a veteran, and I quote, "I can honestly say, because of her knowledge, expertise, persistence, you made, the approval for health benefits became a reality for me. You are highly recommended, and I have experienced why. You serve the veterans and their families well and contribute to the well-being and security in many ways." And last, we have Heather Strickland. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if Heather was able to attend tonight. Not, okay, well, I'll read it anyway. Heather is our real property appraisal specialist in the Tax Office. Heather embodies the terms duty and service in her daily work with the Tax Office. She has been committed to the work done here within the Tax Office since 2015 and has grown exceptionally in her abilities to lead and create and create within that time. Heather's in charge of all of our farm and forestry land within Davie County and makes sure that each parcel is taxed correctly. Up until recently, we, as an office, use a multi-part lengthy process for how we assess farmland, and this consumed much of Heather's time. However, talking, taking the initiative and meeting with our tax software provider, Heather was able to to go above her required duties and create a more efficient process within our office and subsequently teach others in the office the new process for farm value. New method has cut the valuation of a farmland into a fourth of the time it was taken prior. Heather took the lead to initiate and innovate a new process within our office, and this not only saving us time, but helping us to be more accurate and effective as a whole. Heather has committed, committed, committed by the Tax Administrator for finding ways to create efficiencies within our office. We, as the office, are proud of the innovation and therefore has brought us more of a team. And another instance for Heather, Heather recently handled the communicate collection side of the office while all the ladies on that side were either out due to illness or at a conference. She did what Heather does, she came in early, stayed late, and didn't take a lunch just to cover the office. And she always displayed a great work ethic. Ultimately, I'd like to thank all our employees. As you know, as a local government, our people are our business, and right now, business is good. So we look forward to many more celebrations as we move forward. And again, I'd like to ask for one more round of applause for our GEMS recipients.
All right, next we'll move to our Partners Health Management Quarterly Presentation. I'll call Mr. Jackie Copeland.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you again for the time to give you an update of how Partners is serving the residents of Davie County. Again, my name is Jackie Copeland, Partners. Want to kind of talk about, start off and talk about the members, those are the folks that we serve. As you all know, we serve two particular groups of people. That's folks who have Medicaid members and those who are uninsured. This Department Health Human Services provides funds for both of these parts. But Prime Minister talked, the state funds of those who are uninsured fit a category that allows them to receive some state fund. Just some of the numbers. Since we went live November first, two thousand twenty-one, we're up until August thirty-first, we've served about four hundred and seventy-nine Davie County residents, Medicaid members, I should say. We also look at our penetration rate. That rate is just the number of folks who is in the, who see Medicaid, and they want to get in services is the way we can track how well we're doing at getting to that population where they need to be for Medicaid services. Our penetration rate for Davie County is nineteen point five percent. And I came here, it's a typo, they actually came in June to present to you. And then, since then, we've seen a two-point-nine percentage point increase in that penetration rate. As I mentioned, state-funded recipients are those folks who are uninsured who qualify for some state funding for various categories. We served about a hundred and eighty-seven of them since that time period also. Next, we want to talk about our access to care. That's kind of our, one of the means that folks can contact us if they have behavioral health service to get access to one of those services offered by our network. This is our call center. It's staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and fifty-five days a year by qualified mental health substance use professionals and licensed clinicians. Just a little bit of the numbers here for Davie County, we have forty-five calls from May first to June thirtieth. I apologize, we don't have July first data, and that's because we're in the process of, we added a new system in place to prepare us for a tailored plan management in December. And so with that, we have the data, but we wanted to make sure we do data validation first. We wanted to make sure we share information that is accurate with you all. And so what I, we'll let you know that when I come, next update, I'll definitely have that July data for you all. You know, if you, if you choose that before then, please let Ms. Wright know, and she'll let me know, and we'll get that to you. See the breakdown of calls that we have, it's only a two, two-month period, so numbers are rather low. But you can get an idea of the mental health, substance use, intellectual disability calls, along with information referral. Always our largest number, we're a call center, so people call us for behavioral health needs, but they may also call with other needs related to social drivers of health, like they need information on food, housing. We keep a comprehensive resource of the services here in Davie County, and then also surrounding counties, because some may choose elsewhere if we have that. We share that information, and we had, again, two emerging calls. Next, talk a little bit about care management. That's the service line that works with care managers who work with those folks who are in most need. On the mental health and substance use care management team, we're talking about folks who may be either transitioning back to their homes due to inpatient, inpatient stay, those who may just have some very complex need, complex needs that need attention. We have a care management team that works with them. We have fifty-four members right now in Davie County being served by them. And we have an intellectual development disability care management team that also deals with those who have some significant needs, and we provide service to them. And also, in those cases, a lot of times, there are families who, their parents and then what have you that work with them. Fifty-eight members presently receiving that care management. Next, innovations, this is a little bit into the North Carolina Innovations Waiver. Added on to what folks who qualify for, the North Carolina Innovation Waiver receives. I want to share with you just how those numbers look for the county. Ninety-nine Davie County members are now currently receiving Innovation Waiver services. Eighty-one of those have met the requirements and submitted the information that we've submitted to the state that they, when a space comes available, they could qualify for registering unmet needs. So we kind of tracked the information for them, so when a spot does come available, based off, it's a first-serve type deal, we provide that service. One of the things is to let you know why they're waiting, because it is a significant wait because of the amount of, for the funding, because it's, we've talked about before, the Innovation Waiver is funded by the General Assembly. And so we have to wait until that funding comes available. But what we do is if they are on a waitlist, we offer them other services they may can get if they have Medicaid or state-funded services. So we try to offer them something in between. I have a number, a particular number, just to let you know how many, if you part, bear with me one second. We have about twenty-three or thirty-four point three, three percent of those folks who use other services if they choose to. This is something that the member and the family have to elect to, some choose not. But those who do, we provide, we set them up in some type of service. I mentioned Innovation Waiver slots, they're funded by the General Assembly. We've had, fortunate this year, the General Assembly awarded the state of North Carolina a thousand new Innovation slots. That's, that's great news, but as you just see with that number of eighty-one, we've got quite a few people waiting. So we're in the process of awarding out those slots, based off the algorithm the state gave us. They identified three new Innovation slots for Davie County, so we're in the process now, seeing those, those folks want that slot, and then we're gonna get them set up for that. We also had one that was expired or turn over from last fiscal year, since we're really close to the new fiscal year beginning. We were able to roll over and offer out also the Innovation slot. Next, we talk a little bit about Provider Network. That's the, the providers that are in our network to provide these services. Six hundred and sixty-six members receive services, members and recipients receive services between November first and August thirty-first of this year. Two hundred and forty-seven of them received their services, provided a service and a provider site within Davie County. We have heard very clear from the county and also working with Ms. Wright that y'all want more services in the county, so we're, we're working to bring more of those services in the county to decrease the amount of travel time leaving outside the county. I'm gonna jump to the last bullet because it kind of fits well, I probably should have moved it up a little bit. We have some good news. We have a new provider, PQA Healthcare Incorporated, they are coming to the county. Actually, they have came, they've got a space, you see the address on Gates Street. They're in the process of getting geared up. They provide, they're considered a comprehensive provider. They're gonna provide mental health and ADD services. They do provide some substance use services under the intensive enhanced services they provide. We're excited they're coming to the county, they've been one of our providers for a long time in other counties. Right now, the, what only they're waiting on is the part, the vision of state-operated health facilities to come out and kind of obvial their facility, do a quick inspection, and then they'll be able to get that certificate and get going. But they're geared up and really getting ready, and we're excited to bring that too, because we, we heard the desire of the Commission, said we want to bring more service to the county to cut down on travel time and just make it here in Davie County. And I'll go back up to the other bullet point, total number of Medicaid and state dollars that have been expended or paid out for services, a little over six point five million dollars since we went and go live in November as of the end of August. Next, want to hit on, you know, I came before you and talked about our Partners Community Promise, and that's what we're engaged, want to be part of the community, so this is a slide you talk about. Some of the things we're doing in the community, you see here some of the trainings we offer. We have our community engagement trainers, along with our member engagement trainers, that provide trains to organizations throughout the county. These are no cost to them, they're just ways that we can help educate the community in behavioral health needs and also work with other organizations that they work with, these folks with behavioral health needs. And so you'll see some of the breakdown. I want, first off, Crisis Intervention Treatment, CIT. We've had four trained, we're working on bringing that service here. Last time I came in June, I thought I talked about that we have been working with Davidson and Davie Community College to work with them and partner and provide that training. It just makes sense that they do the basic law enforcement training too, to have that built into that. We're still working on that, so we hope to, we're having discussions with them, hopefully bring that here. I know the Sheriff's Office and EMS will appreciate not having to leave outside. I think the four that were trained, I think they went to the Yak and training we had going on, so hopefully we're striving to have that here in the county, so they won't have to travel as far and they can train more of their folks. Other trains, I want, I just hit on the highlights. You see these trains talking about suicide prevention, how we're dealing with anxiety, also dealing with abuse, sexual and physical abuse and training there too. And so various ways we're trying to work with the community. Again, these trainings are free, so we ask if a community agency is interested, or that could be a church group, you'll see in our slot where we're working with some church groups, please let us know, and we will gladly customize the training. We bring that to them. We can do it, we can customize it based off the organization's needs, and we can do it virtually, because some prefer that still, and so we can do either one. Next, engaging the community, some of the community events. You see here some of these events that you all familiar with, we've been engaged in. Again, trying to make sure we're interacting as much as we can with the community, hearing what the needs and gaps are, seeing where things can work together to address behavioral health needs for the community. And a slide that I, I'll go ahead in a minute, I probably should have mentioned earlier, is I've had a few questions about, you know, what are you doing for senior adults? Y'all do anything? And yes, we do. We actually have a team dedicated to doing education related to geriatric baby health topics. We refer to them as our GAST team, G-A-S-T. But they're a team that's made up of licensed personnel, professionals, who provide various training to various groups that are consumer-facing for senior adults. As you see here, everything from church groups to working with senior services to adult care homes, home care providers. Again, those service that, we're fortunate to have some state dollars, we can do this. And if, again, if anyone's interested, please reach out to myself, and we'll arrange that. Stephanie Engel is the coordinator of this, and she can have her team put together a training that meets the needs of whatever the organization's looking for. And finally, I want to kind of touch on how we're addressing opioid addiction. We all know that's still a major issue that we continue to have to deal with and try to figure out ways to address that. So one of the things that Partners has done is obtained some various adult substance, yes, substance opioid use dollars, grants, to be able to provide services. So we're working now in, in collaboration with Ms. Wright and to bring more residential services to the community, such as transitional housing, some recovery, recovery housing, especially aimed at those individuals who are re-entering, demetting jails, or being incarcerated in some form, a way they can have some recovery house where they can continue with their treatment, but at the same time have that kind of sober living to kind of help them get a job and get back on their feet. We don't have, we have, we have some names that we're looking at, we're not, haven't got those signed contracts yet, but want to let you know we're working on that to bring more recovery housing to the community. And thank you for your time, and I'll be interested to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. You, I just want to say this, since June, maybe even a little before that, we've got more information on the overall community that you serve than we've probably had in the last ten years. And I really appreciate it. I know the other Commissioners do too. I just thank you for coming and being transparent with us. It helps us to answer any questions that we might be approached with, but just really appreciative. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and the Commissioners, because some of you reached out to me and gave me some pointers and directions for Partners in general. It's a team approach, we take that with all the work we do, so thank you for that. And I'll share that back with our teams to know. Thank you. We look forward to continue. Again, if there are issues, please reach out to myself or anyone on the Partners team. We want to kind of solve issues as best as we can.
I appreciate, we see you often and at other places, and, and that's very encouraging, because I know that you're really trying to stay involved and, and keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on. Jackie, thank you so much.
Thank you. But it's a team. We have Mary Beth Young, who's really engaged with the community collaborative, she kind of leads that. Then we also have Derek Bitner, yes, Derek Bitner, the well-respected Mr. Bitner. He's engaged too on the member engagement side, so he's involved in a lot of these events too. They hit more events than I'm able to. So we have that, we have some trainers. We have two dedicated trainers, Stephanie Funderburke and Stephanie Robbins, who are dedicated to Davie County. So it's a team approach, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a clarification on eight-one. I'll go to Mr. Bogart, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In reviewing the video of the August first, two thousand twenty-two meeting, I was concerned as to what the public perceived as being approved in item number seven, three zoning text amendment. The motion is stated was simply, I make a motion to approve, which motion was seconded and then voted four to zero favorable for approvals as the presentation by the planning and zoning staff was different from the recommendation by the planning board that was in your agenda. I simply wanted to clarify and make certain of the motion to approve. that was in your agenda. I simply wanted to clarify and make certain the motion to approve was the staff recommendation actually presented where in the wording raised on the premises was deleted from the definition in, in one fifty-five dash zero zero one in agriculture and not the recommendation of the planning board, which was included in the language. Further, I wanted to be certain that the four oh vote was for the vote for the language presented orally by the planning board and not that which was recommended by the plan, by the planning and zoning staff and not that which was recommended by the planning board in the agenda packet. And the motion also included the following language, motion to approve amendment to section one fifty-five dash zero zero one, definitions agriculture and agabusiness as the amendment promotes public health, safety and general welfare is consistent with all applicable adopted plans and the board considered the action reasonable and in the public interest in a set approval furthers the goals, objectives, actions and policies of the comprehensive planning growth enhancement strategy by strengthening support for agricultural economic developments. Is the above correct and do you reaffirm your vote on the text amendment without the language raised on the premise of the above statement I've just read? If so, would you put, the four of you that were here, would you please confirm by show of hands and that you did intend to pass an amendment as presented by the planning and zoning staff and that that was the vote? If you could just-
Mr. Chairman, I'm, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm the one that made that motion and I would like to clarify that.
I made the motion that night, correct?
And you seconded it?
I seconded, okay.
Yeah.
If, all four of you, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
That should go in the minutes that way then. Good.
All right, next we'll move to consent agenda. If I have any, I look for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion of a second.
Second.
Motion of second and further discussion. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we'll move to old business and we'll discuss the fire funding allocation.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into that, there's just a couple of points I want to bring. This certainly will not be long, but in regards to Chief Keaton's comments, I'm not responding to him, but I have a couple of questions. One is prior, the issue of annexation, okay?
Prior to our next meeting, which I believe an issue is going to come to us about the issue of, of the Cana Road property to, to our county attorney, I would like to know what the options are. We, we never really or clearly have been presented the options that would allow us to not necessarily stop annexation, but what we're, what we, what are we allowed to do? Because this is a legislative issue. It's not necessarily a statute issue of Davie County. I, I think a great point has been brought up too in regards to this issue that's coming to us. And, you know, I'm all for business, but I would like to know if there are options that allow for that, not necessarily annexation, if that property is in Moxville's EJT, would it allow for, in theory, what they want to take place without removing that off of William R. Davie's revenue rolls, if that makes sense to you? Chief Keaton brings up Farmington Road and things that have been done out in that area. They may not necessarily be apples to apples comparisons, but I would like to have those answers and we don't have to have them. If you could get them to me. So options on what we can do on the issues of annexation. And then secondly, what are the options that might allow for everyone to be satisfied in terms of, of the developers out there, but might not necessarily damage the William R. Davie Fire Department and gives us kind of a pathway if this happens again to other rural fire departments, if that makes sense to you?
Yeah. Not just extra options on William R. Davie, but options on the entire tax base-
Period.
Or any of the departments.
Period.
Okay.
Period. Yes, yes, sir.
Be glad to do that for you.
And a second thing is in relate, relation to Chief Naylor's recommendations and thoughts. It, it seems like this, this is continually an issue of how we distribute funds, okay? And I don't know if this is the way we should go or not, but I would like for us to chew on it, pray on it and think about it. Do we want to put together some, this is a worn out term, but a blue ribbon committee that would include, that would include members of staff, include our fire partners, include folks that are involved in taxation, that would, or, you know, our tax departments, that would allow us to assess and look at different modes of how we distribute these funds. Look at some of the stuff that Todd has, has sent us before. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying we do anything different, but I'm saying sometimes you've got five volunteers up here. It's not something that we have the time to really focus on. And I, that's probably a bad, bad thing for me to say, but I'd like for the experts to look at it, not just, not just in fire, but also in the, in, in the whole community. And let's make this, if, if we're going to look at this, let's make, let's have some different ideas and different thoughts. Look at Iredale County, look at other counties and kind of see what might be the best mode to distribute these, these, these tax dollars. And, and we may have the best mode, but we may not. So that's, that, I just put that on the table. We're a few months away from budget, beginning budget process and it may be the time for us to look at this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't disagree with that. I like what Mr. Commissioner Jones had to say there, for sure. So let's further our discussion on, on the fire funding allocation and where we are. And I appreciate all the comments that we heard tonight. A lot of them are very important and, and should weigh on our decision or weigh on our decision to, to continue discussing and, and figuring out. I think Ms. West has some information for us.
As you recall, we identified four hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars during the budget process that we included in fire and rescue funding. This came from the county's fund balance. What we've done tonight has prepared, we prepared four scenarios based on Commissioner feedback on how to allocate these funds. Just as a reminder, we've got those funds set aside. We can apply any of it or all of it back to fund balance. We can distribute it, you know, many different ways, but we have picked four scenarios for simplicity. The first scenario we have would be to distribute the four hundred ninety-two thousand equally by increasing each fire department and the rescue squad allocation by thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This would bring the new base allocation to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this was the amount that was recommended based on the fire study that was done back in September of 2020, which was two years ago. The second scenario is based on Commissioner feedback. This would be to increase the rescue squad funding to three hundred thousand dollars and increase the nine base fire departments by forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Scenario number three would be to increase the three large departments by fifty-five thousand and the remaining nine in the rescue squad by thirty-two thousand seven fifty-five. And the fourth scenario we have will be to increase the nine fire departments getting the minimum by thirty-seven thousand eight eighty-nine, increasing the rescue squad to three hundred thousand, increasing the three largest departments by twenty-one thousand two twenty-two. So those are the four scenarios that we have prepared for you.
And under that scenario, that gets the, the, the nine fire departments to the two fifty that they kind of recommend.
Yes, the difference between the two twelve, I think it's two twelve one eleven they're getting now, and the two fifty would be the thirty-seven eight eighty-nine.
Again, that two fifty number, so we all know, came from-
That came from the fires, the consultant fire study, the management solutions for emergency services group fire study that we did two years ago now.
Which, which obviously Mr. Naylor pointed out, you know, things are getting more expensive. We all know that.
Yes, yes, all the way around.
Everybody that runs a business knows that. Okay. All right. Further discussion?
Well, I, of course, I always have something to say when it's regarding fire. So the two fifty that we were recommended, that was recommended to us, as we said, two years ago, which was before the economy kind of gone, went crazy and everything got more expensive. And as Chief Naylor stated earlier, you know, our base departments waited a long time to get an increase and they were very behind by the time they got the increase. So we, as a board, or this board, voted for Advance to have a rural fire district where they could raise their own money if they needed more funding. They have not asked us for an increase. So that leads me to believe they must be fine. The Moxville Fire Department chooses to act as a municipal department. So I'd feel like that we need to have some better agreement with them. We need to put our heads together with the town. They have the largest budget in the county. So, and then of course, Smith Grove is serving the town of Bermuda Run and other than just regular county taxes, they're not contributing to that. Although I may be alone in this, my wish is that we move the base departments up as much as we can and to move the rescue squad up to the three hundred thousand dollars because they cover the whole county. So my vote would be for option two.
Any other discussion or? Way in here?
I'll give it a go. As been pointed out, the fire commission or the study that was done a few years ago, Mr. Bost stated that the minimum to run a fire department should be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was the, kind of the, while it wasn't written in stone, that's kind of been the goal to get everyone to two fifty, or at least you could argue that. I appreciate that things have went up. I hear you. But, you know, I hear the number tonight, two ninety, and that's what's coming in Iredal. But we've got to take steps to, we got to take steps as we can afford them. And if we got everyone to two fifty, you know, that would have taken the smaller ones from one twenty-nine to two fifty in two years. Not where you need to be, but that's, we're making progress. So that said, I'm, I'm going to support item number one, but before, I'm going to ask Commissioner Jones something. Mark, are you suggesting we table this tonight? Are you?
I, I can, I don't, I, my thought was in regards to heading into the next budget year that we began to have discussions over the, the issue of, of how we distribute these dollars. I believe we need to get the, the nine smaller departments to the, to the, to two fifty. I honestly believe, based on what I'm hearing, because, and what I've heard, that, that we need to have a little bit more discussion about the allocation outside of those, outside of those nine departments. I would not want to table this for a prolonged period of time, this distribution of the four, of the four ninety-two five fifty-seven. I think they're really two different, two different discussions. I have a different opinion in terms of the, the allocation of the other dollars, but I, I believe we should table at least for a minimum of thirty days and have a little bit more discussion over the reallocation of these other dollars. But I think it's, I think this is a much broader discussion over in the long term, okay? I lean more toward, toward I, option four. I would like to have a little more discussion about the issue of getting the rescue squad to three hundred thousand dollars. But I believe also in the, in the broader discussion of this, the rescue squad should be moved outside of these issues of discussion over fire funding. And, and I'm a layman from the outside looking in, but I believe they are more, it seems to me, they're more, I know they support the fire departments, but they also seems to be in terms of the issue of funding of EMS, that the rescue squad falls within that issue too. We continually are, and I think it's because they're a volunteer unit, but we're continually drawing in, them into the issue of the discussion of fire funding. And so I think in the broad, longer term discussion of this, we need to talk about getting the rescue squad out of this discussion. Now, what that looks like, I think we need to have the discussion of it. But, but I think in the long term, that's what we should do. I don't know that that's an issue as it relates to the four ninety-two five fifty-seven other than some, some clear definition to me about why we need to get them to three hundred thousand. I, I, I believe that item one is the easy way to do this, but I'm not sure it's the correct way to do it. And so I would make the motion to table for thirty days to have more discussion on this. Mr. Chairman?
Anybody else got any discussion? I will make the statement that, you know, I believe everybody here deserves some piece of the pie. That's all I will say now. Now, what, what ratio or what piece of that pie obviously is determined, you know, by us and by what funding we have. And, you know, I do believe that everybody has a minimum. I understand that. Just like Terry said, if, if we had a pot of gold, we'd give it out and we wish we did. So I'm, I'm okay with tabling it so we can get our head more wrapped around this, if that's what everybody can agree to. But we don't want to table it any more than thirty days. These, these men and women have worked hard and, and we're, we're trying to make the right decision here. But also in the same stance, we want to make sure that we're covering our bases.
Are you making that as a motion?
Yes, sir. He did.
He's already made the motion. Didn't need a second for that motion to care.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to table for thirty days. Is that correct? Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Some more discussion?
Maybe.
Okay, and I'm support the motion, but understanding thirty days, this is a broad, this is a complex issue. So I hear you on the thirty days, but I'm just trying to figure out, is that going to be adequate? That's my only point.
Well, the, it, it, to me, it would be adequate in discussion of the four ninety-two. It's not adequate in the broader discussion of what we want to do in terms of distribution. That's something that, you know, I would say within the next thirty days, kind of in, in the parameters of what I just talked about, obviously the question's over annexation, we can get those answered, but that we might have some recommendations from staff as to how we could put together a group to talk about the long-term issues of funding. But the four ninety-two, no, I, I get it. We, we have to deal with that. Now, if you have other thoughts, I'm willing to listen, but-
Not other than the complexity of this issue. And we've been talking about it for a long time. And there are unlimited combinations here. And, you know, and to have the global discussion, if we're talking about next budget year on the global, then great. I'm with-
That, that's my thought.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Mr. Chair, before y'all vote on that motion, and now thirty days, you've got twenty-one days to your next board meeting is all. Comes up on the third and today's already the twelfth.
Yeah.
So you probably want to maybe specify November the 7th, table till November 7th, or table till November, October the 3rd.
I will narrow that to the October the 3rd meeting, whatever the parameters that would get us, to the October meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Richard. I'll amend that second too.
Anybody in agreeance here? We have a motion and a second to take it to the next meeting.
Till October 3rd, okay.
All in favor?
My vote.
Next, we'll move to new business. Any new business before us this evening? Seeing none. County manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As part of my report tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity, as you all know, that our August meeting was my first meeting, so I missed a great opportunity to welcome one of our new department directors. And I'd like to ask Mr. Johnny Easter to come up. Johnny is our new planning director. One of his many duties is correctly telling me last week that my mountaineers were going to push around Texas A&amp;M, and they pulled that off. So wanted to give Johnny a few seconds to introduce him to you all and to the community.
Well, thank you, thank you. Look forward to the opportunity to being here. I'm excited to be a part of Davie County. A little bit about my history. I started my 25-year career thus far in local government in Forsyth County. Spent about eight years in Forsyth County in public health. I oversaw, I was the supervisor over new construction, well and septic. So left Forsyth County in 2006, 2006, rather, transitioned into Surrey County and was the Director of Environmental Health. So spent about 11 years with that, then transitioned out of that and became Development Services Director, where I was acting planning director and oversaw building inspections. So my 25-year career has been in development. I still hold all my certifications associated with well and septic and some of the environmental health stuff, so added. But look forward to working here in Davie County. I look forward to building relationships with the community at large, with developers at large, to have every opportunity that we can to let people show that Davie County is a place where we need to be. Develop relationships, develop a synergistic relationship with staff as a whole. So look forward to working with this board and all the citizens of Davie County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also, I'd like to take an opportunity, this is kind of twofold. I'd like to ask our new elections director, Melissa Parker, to come up. As you know, elections in today's world are more difficult than they have been in the past, and with a small department, I thought it was important, as we move into November, and actually as we move into early voting next month, that you all have an opportunity to meet Melissa and her new deputy director, as today was her first day. So on my first day, I got welcomed in by a board meeting, and so do you, so I'm happy to share that with somebody else. So take it away, Melissa.
Thank you very much. I think I know most of you, but I've been with the county for 11 years now as a deputy director, and I have some big shoes to fill, but I'm excited to take on the task. And through those 11 years, Tabitha did a great job of connecting me anytime we had something new come up. So a majority of the things I'm familiar with, so there are some things that, of course, I'm going to have to learn. But to help me with that is my new deputy, Mrs. Cindy Kirkus. She comes to us from Lexington, and I'm going to let you finish the rest of it.
Well, I worked as a temporary in the 2020 election with absentee ballot fiasco.
Yes, which we actually started, we started mailing out ballots on Friday.
So, and I was a temp in Davidson County, and after that, you know, there's just something about working in elections that you feel like you're part of something bigger than yourself. I know I told you that in that interview, but it's true, and I wanted to seek that, a job in that. And I've been working for Cabarrus County and working as their precinct coordinator, and so anyway, this job came available, and I was encouraged to apply, and so I'm here. And I'm looking, I'm ready to dive in and get started.
So we have some experience here. We're excited. Thank you very much.
And when does early voting start?
Early voting starts on October 20th. Three locations, Moxville, Bermuda Run, Town Hall, and Jerusalem Volunteer Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
As earlier tonight, we talked about our GEMS award recipients. I failed to mention our GEMS committee, so I want to recognize those folks real quick. Kelly Thunderburg, Brad Blackwelder, Carrie Miller, Danny Smith, and Kendra Rothie. This is the committee that takes all of our applications and submitted, and is able to determine those wonderful folks that you saw tonight. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about is if you look up towards the front here, underneath our monitor, we have a rendering of EMS Station 4. Our interim EMS director, Joseph Ashburn, is here, so if anybody has any questions about that new facility, Joseph can talk to you after the meeting. But I wanted to make sure, I know EMS has been a topic of discussion, and I wanted to put us in a positive direction as we move forward with that department and that service. So that's all I have tonight.
Let's move to commissioners' comments. Ladies first, Mr. Finney.
He always makes me go first. Speaking of the EMS building, I saw stakes this morning on the property, so that's very exciting to know. Got some movement on it, so that's great. Congratulations to all of the GEM recipients. Very well deserved. They all work very hard, as all of our staff and employees do, and we're very grateful for them. I want to share something a little different tonight, because yesterday was 9/11, and it's just a very special time to me, and it really makes me look back and reflect on different things, and I hope that it does you as well. So I want to share this with you tonight. Yesterday, we remembered 9/11. Today, my wish is that we will remember 9/12. On September 12th, 2001, our country was truly united. We realized that life was short and precious. We were proud to be Americans, and flags flew everywhere. We were brave, and we were grateful for our threatened freedom. We turned our fear, shock, and loss into bravery, preparedness, appreciation, and patriotism. We loved our neighbor, and we were quick to help. We stood in line to give blood, donated food and supplies, and volunteered to help in any way. First responders were respected, appreciated, and exalted for being the heroes that they were and continue to be. For a time, it seemed that greed, power, and selfishness subsided. We turned back to God and poured into worship centers across the nation. How wonderful it would be if we could recapture the goodness of September 12th, and I hope that it doesn't take a tragedy to make us remember how to put others first, to truly love our neighbor as Jesus directed us to do.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I cannot add to that. Thank you, Ms. Finney, and thank each of you for being here. Thank you for our GEM award winners. It's just a, that's just a manifestation and a statement of what we're all about. And we have, I think, I think our county manager said our business is the business of people, and business is good. That's a really good statement, too. Thank you for each of you here, staff members and volunteers that serve this county and make it a great place to live. We really appreciate you, and you're a blessing directly from God, and we thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say thank you also to all the people who got the awards for going the extra mile. I think any of our county employees would qualify for that, but especially those that did. And I'd like to say thanks to all the employees for everything that you do. Ms. Finney said it exactly right, the statement that she just read for us, and I hope that we never forget that, and we never forget the soldiers that have fought in all our wars and sacrificed their lives, and we always remember those. Thank you to all the people that have come out tonight, and I wish everyone would have stayed that came. But it'll be good to see you back next time, and congratulations to those who have either new jobs or new employment with the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I appreciate all the comments on the fire. This is, again, we're making progress, so I hope that's the takeaway from this action tonight as it relates to that. Congratulations to the GEM recipients. Extremely well deserved, but thank you to all the employees. As you may or may not recall, last month was Dr. Slate Month. We did a proclamation for that here in Davie for the month of August, and Dr. Slate, he celebrated his 100th birthday, and he asked me to publicly thank the community for making it Dr. Slate Month, so he was very appreciative of that. Hope to see you next month. Thank you very much.
Again, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Thanks to all our staff, especially our employees that represented the GEM awards tonight. Ms. Finney can't say enough about your presentation. Also, for the fire, you know, piece from my standpoint, you know, again, we wish we had so much more funding that we could give out. It's unfortunate, but we're working, and we want you to know that. We care, and we want to do as much as we can do. And I know it's unfortunate that we're working from a budget, but we're continuing to get better, and we're working at it, and we want you to know that. You see us trying. And so we've made so many leaps and bounds in the last two years versus the previous, what, 15? So please, continue to work with us, and we appreciate your comments and your insight. So that's all I've got.
So we'll look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.